As mentioned, that current real estate tax column there, that was the 2016 tax increase. There was no tax increase in 2017, no tax increase in 2018, no taxes in 2019, and again, no tax increase in 2020. Uh, next column is your current earned income tax. Again, you see, um, some increase in growth there from 26 million, 26.2 million in 2016, 27.5 million in 2019. So overall, that is a change of 0.3 million dollars or a growth of about 5%. Again, not dramatic, you see it's probably about three, four hundred thousand dollars a year.
It's only about one and a quarter percent a year.
One and a quarter percent, yep, so, but it's performing better than your real estate taxes. Uh, your next column is your personal expenses. Uh, this excludes pension costs. Uh, you see in 2016, you had 48.2 million dollars in personnel expenses. Uh, 2019, that went up to 53.8 million. So over the time period, you can see there that the personnel expenses did increase 5.6 million over those four years for 11.7% increase. Uh, pension expense MMO, you see the same thing, uh, 2016, 14.4, 2017 was 18.8. The highlight there in that year is the Judge Mazzoni decision that, uh, the city petitioned that the, uh, under the two class A, that the pensions were actuarially unsound and Judge Mazzoni sided with the city. So the colas for the pensions were dropped. Uh, the ink, the decrease you see from 18 to 13 million in 2018 is mostly, given there are other factors, mostly reduction of those colas not being in your actuarially MMO evaluations. And again, that is, as long as I mentioned back in July, as long as that the pensions are actuarially unsound, this is helping the city financially, but if the pensions do to a point where which is, we don't know what that definition is actuarially sound, the city's gonna, those colas come back on and the actuary goes up.
Or if your investments go south, they'll be two years on the biennial assessment. That's coming up in January 2021. If they go south, you'll have an increased MMO.
Now, Matt, do you think, and maybe Dave or the mayor can answer this, do you foresee, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but do you foresee the pensions becoming sound in the next few years based on the super funding of the pension? Because as you said, if that does happen, it's gonna kick off.
Again, that's, I think that definition is not really defined anywhere.
Oh.
That's up to the judge. You know, I'm sure probably what would happen was you'd be petitioned, just retirees would petition the city and say, we're actually still retired, petition the court, say, okay. And then that would be a determination by the court. But, you know, over the last year, you've seen the increase in the pension fundings for police and fire table based on.
The goal of an actuarially sound pension fund is a long-term goal. But in the short term, what the city has done is taken steps to both make it more financially sound by lowering the discount rate, which increases the MMO, by super funding it with the taking advantage of Act 205's allowance of putting funds in mid-year and reducing the current year MMO. Those things have had direct expenditure reductions, which has taken the pressure off the city, uh, for the last few years. That's an important thing. They were not one-time revenues for a sugar high. They were part of the long-term process to develop a financially sustainable pension fund. But pension funds aren't like mortgages. They can become actuarially unsound by the market value, their underlying investments, by a change in mortality tables, by changing the discount rate. Uh, to see the pension fund as some sort of mortgage that can be paid off is the wrong way to look at it. It's really managed in year-to-year expenses because you have the 30-year amortization, the life of the pension fund. I look at the pension problem as more of a year-to-year balancing, and the city's done that by reducing the.
But I think, Councilman, you're.
Clearly 18 million was unsustainable.
I think what you're concerned about too is, is once we get to a certain level, the cola will come off.
Yeah.
And that's gonna increase the expense, but I don't think we're there yet. I think we're still at that rate where we're moderately distressed or even not quite severely distressed, we're moving towards moderately distressed, and I don't think that the courts will.
We are generally, so it depends on whether you're looking at it, uh, from the standpoint of the composite plan or the individual components of the plan. Uh, the, the most favorable funding scenario still places each of those components in moderately distressed status. As Jerry and Matt pointed out, i- in order to be able to advance that discussion, uh, you would need a certification by the pensions actuary that the plans are actuarially sound. That does certainly doesn't occur when the plans are severely distressed, and it certainly doesn't occur when the plans are moderately distressed. Is there a discussion when they become minimally distressed? So that's the 70% mark, between 70 and 90%, and then anything exceeding 90% would be actuarially sound.
And we're not there.
Right. And I think it's important too, you know, the actuarially sound is in the two, class two A code, that, so it's not really defined. What Dave's referring to when he's saying severely modeling the percentages, that's in Act 205. So, you know, a court can use that as guidance, but a court does have a way to interpret two A actuarially sound. They can say, well, we're following 205, but they can say it's a little bit different. So again, there is a little bit of risk because there's not the same law. Makes sense?
And the city has a revenue source dependent on that classification. You're able to levy the higher, uh, local services tax because of that. That's what was tied to the ability to levy that without court approval as long as you had the stress, the stress pensions. Because the funding is going.
And the LST is tied to 205.
Yeah.
So that's what you're gonna see, Councilman.
So it is a catch 22, obviously. You know, the more favorable our pensions are, then we'd risk losing LST, and we also have risk incorporating the cola back in.
You want, you want sustainable pensions, but it's a year-to-year expense that you have to try to manage, and I think that's, that's, and 10 million seems to be manageable.
Yeah.
You know, with the $3 million state aid, I think we're not, it's 13 million or 12 million, but a $3 million state aid, you're looking at eight to eight and a half million.
Okay, now, the next column will be total personnel operating expenses is really an aggregate of previous two, um, columns. And you'll see in 2016, you had 62.6 million dollars in total personnel operating expense. Another note on this column too, your total personnel operating expenses are about 66% of your budget, 66, somewhere in the mid 60s. You can see some variations there, but in 2019, it was 64.6 million. Uh, we're taking the changes from 2016 to 2019, so you'll see the 2.0 change in that time period. And then the very last column is just your rate of inflation, you know, outside of, these are just your overall general CPI index of rate of inflation, which the city is subject to on all their costs. Every year, just doing nothing, uh, costs are going up for everybody, that affects individuals as much as borrowers.
Matt, can I ask one quick question, please? The total operating cost for personnel that are 62 million and some on change, are you able to give me an opinion how that rates compared to other municipalities that you deal with? Is it right in the, where it should be? Is it high, is it low?
You mean, well, the percentage-wise, right?
Percentage-wise.
Percentage of budget, 66%.
You said 66%, correct.
I would say pretty much.
You are standard.
That's standard.
I, I can, I can win bets all day long by guessing that the municipality's, uh, cost for employment is between 60 and 70%.
And we see them higher, we see them up to 80. I don't really think we've ever seen them below 60.
It's in a range though, it's in a reasonable range.
The two-thirds range is the, is kind of your benchmark in Pennsylvania. It is, you are a labor-intensive service provider. There's really no way to automate many of the functions.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think what we've discussed previously is a significant portion of that is dedicated to public safety in every municipality.
Okay, um, next we have on the, this table here is your EIT increase, which is really your 1.3 above, and that's your difference between 2016 and 2019.
So that was a revenue increase.
Mm-hmm. And we have the personnel operating increase, which is your second to last column, your ultimate column there, which is your 2.00, which is really your aggregate, um, of your person, pension and your personal expenses. And you see the revenue show, well, this for operating of $732,000. That's the number that we looked at that we would like to see fixed. So the next step down will be your current taxes are, this is 2019, 31.148 million dollars, yeah, 31 million, 148,000. Uh, to make up that $732,000, we're saying you'll need 2.4% tax increase in your, in your general fund budget.
For 2020.
We, we show this to show you the effect of the decay of the revenue and the increase in your expenses. If revenues were growing at the rate of 5%, you would not have this, you know, even, but your expenditures, and this is typical for municipalities in Pennsylvania, expenditures outpace revenues by two to one, usually at least. So we're saying, um, to answer the question, should there be a tax increase in 2020 budget? You have expenditure reductions, uh, and the budget has built in, a balanced budget, but to wipe out the net impact of revenue decreases that decay and the increase in expenditures, uh, as both the exit plan and I think the Ambrosa Plan, moderate yearly increases, uh, will be warranted. You have a base of now of 33 million and a 2% increase on a big base, you yield a lot more money. When, when the, when the first year of the recovery plan, the real estate taxes levied were $8 million. So to cover a $2 million, uh, to cover that $700,000 shortfall, you were looking at 10% increase in taxes because your base was so small. And we'll show you some other items here. It's only been in the last seven years that the real estate base has become a productive tax base because of the requirement to have to raise tax.
Taxes increases.
When you ran out of money in 2012, you had to raise taxes, and they were at the level that we had been warning the city about for the last 10 years, that the 125% increase that we said was necessary in 2009 and 10. 10 years later, that's what you did. But it, it's a matter of if you delay too long, you dig yourself into a hole, but as Dave pointed out, you need a double-digit increase, and then the political will becomes hard, then the public gets upset. Uh, a 2% increase on a larger base is a good place to be.
Okay, you see, the next column, uh, is your land milage and your improvement, that would be, uh, the increase would be to each at the 2.4, to get the 2.4%. So that would be your milage rate for 2020. And then the bottom is just your, uh, your, uh, 2020 assessed values, aggregate. 89 million for your land value and 296 million for your 20 improvement. So you can use that as basis for math.
Now, is this your recommendation, like?
We're showing you the situation that the city faces whenever they prepare a budget. The recovery plan, I'm sorry, the exit plan showed deficits that were wiped out by the expenditure cuts. We had a $3 million, I showed in the budget, that there was about a $3 million projected deficit, which would have happened had you not had those reductions in the MMO and other things.
The savings, yeah.
The savings, okay? And, um, this was 2017, you had the year, 2015, there was a tax increase. So we're saying to follow the exit plan recommendations to maintain fiscal sustainability, you need to look at maybe yearly and the other years. The mayor's gonna give me a dag when I say this, but you need to raise property.
There we am.
I know. But you would, I'm not changing a story, we've heard this before from me. Only because of the financial sustainability of the city because you have revenue decay and you have expenditure growth. If you were a very prosperous place, if you were some sort of township or something that has a lot of development, you have natural growth. The city has not seen natural revenue growth in years.
My question then, and I've asked this before, and I think I know how you're gonna answer it, but when I look at like your, um, the proposed budget and the, the exit plan, um, there's such a great variation between what you're projecting and what's actually in the budget when we talk about capital expenditures, um, departmental expenditures and non-departmental expenditures. So I think my concern has been over the last few years, especially capital expenditures. Now, I understand in some instances you need them and they're, they're required, or else still the other problem, but to the extent that we're consistently going over 100% of what your projections were, I think that's my.
Well, our projections were, remember, the assumptions in the exit plan were such that we kept things steady because we can't make policy for this municipality. We don't run the city, we simply implement the recovery plan or the exit plan as adopted by the city. So when we make assumptions, we make assumptions based on what the city's current attitude is at that time, and then we usually roll it forward, especially the capital. But there's no question that you, you run an enterprise here that has growing stock, that has fixed assets, that has buildings that are, you have to fix those. And, and capital cost increases are usually a reflection of permanent. So we can't say that because that becomes a policy decision because the more capital, the more revenue. So that's why there's these differences, uh, by and large. We reconcile them every year because the, the budget is still compliant with the plan in that it's a balanced budget and the city is not projecting crazy revenue or one-time asset sales or things that wouldn't occur, but simply the balance budget, it's not paid for much. Uh, be, having said that, the policy decision we're saying is, and it's not for this mayor, for this business manager, it's for every council and every mayor, your revenue is decreasing and decaying because of who you are, and you need to make sure you don't fall behind that trend.
Just more on maybe a, um, a philosophical take on this real thing. The city's been in distressed status since 1902, so it's always 40-year rule. So I don't, there have, how many cities have actually exited Act 47?
Oh, several.
Several.
Yeah, and you're on, you're on the cusp of a.
I understand, and this is no reflection on, on you guys, but do you, do you maybe think that the plant, the, the system is broke? Because it seems to me that even when we exit Act 47, we're still gonna have these problems.
You are exiting.
In all these years, it seems, I, am I missing something here?
Not, not Act 47, the local government finance. The way we finance local governments in Pennsylvania does not work for, um, built-out, older urban center. That has been, I, we've done.
Most of it has been that assessed value column.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just, shoot, this is, all your old municipalities are dealing with the same issue that you got, right? We're no different than them.
And there's bigger macro issues too. I mean, reassessment is obviously one that would change those numbers because they would allow for growth once we do a reassessment. We're, we're not flat, we're, we're decreasing every year, and that's why we've always been pushing for reassessments, because that's a tool to increase growth opportunities.
Those solutions to those problems are above this table.
Right. I agree.
Yeah, I used to, I used to warn prior councils that don't play out, don't fall into that trap of, of trying to win in a, in a system that's broken. You need to fix your revenue local because you're not gonna get as much help from Harrisburg as you need. You do, and we, the city's been very fortunate. You have the LST, you have the ability for the payroll tax, you have tools that the legislature.
Payable court decision.
Payable court decision with the cola. You have those tools. We're simply saying, as you said, you're exiting Act 47, but you're, you're leaving the hospital to go to a environment that's still broken. There's still holes and there's still contagion out there because you are still facing a revenue decay. No matter how.
You already spread, I mean, like.
Well, the tools you have.
Right.
Besides.
Well, you have a home loan charter.
Well, you, you're limited, you really are, again, this is above us. You have certain tools that you can use. Property taxes, earned income tax, your 511 taxes, that's what you have. You have also on the flip side, expenditure reductions, but that's it. You know, you have a certain amount of limited tools that you have that you can use. You can't look outside of that scope and use anything, you know, you're kind of limited what you got. You know, it's, it's, I actually, you know, it's, it's, it's simple, but everybody tries to look outside, but it's really.
Now, when we exit Act 47, um, these tools, do we lose any? Now, I don't wanna say lose, but are we limited then when we exit Act 47?
You're, you are very fortunate in that you had a home loan charter in place. Many of the cities that exited Act 47 have to go through a home loan charter process to get out from under the third-class city code restrictions on EIT, which is the number one. You have always had flexibility in EIT. The criticism I've always thought about the city was that the political leaders ran on the fact that they never raised property taxes, but they had a 3.5% wage tax, or 3.4% wage tax shared with the school district. So on one hand, you said, hey, I didn't raise your property taxes, but as you get more revenue, I grew more, and it became inverted. You were always at $22 million in EIT, but you only had 12 and 13 million over the last 10 years of real estate. That's an upside-down equation. That looks like a second-class township where the EIT is higher than real estate. Urban areas, the property tax is the driver because the earned income tax is productive, but it's usually limited by the, by the code, the half of 1%. You've had your time living on the earned income tax. You now need to adjust your revenue mix so that it's more representative of, of the base. I think you can raise EIT, but that has trouble because that makes you less competitive with your neighbors. You're already, you're already 2% higher. Remember the tools, and the tools we're saying, all we see here available is to offset the decay in revenue on assessed valuation is the real estate. Because it's large enough now to have significant increase in revenue without punitive, uh, on the taxpayer.
Yeah, let's, let's, we get to the next slide because I think a lot of these questions will.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, too, I mean, one of the reasons we need to learn it was to accelerate growth, building growth, and also the opportunities that we have downtown are all speeding accelerating growth. So there are things in place that are.
We're really reviewing the history of that question.
That wasn't a huge hit though in the last couple of years, right, Lerta? You're hoping to do more with that, we said?
When it was a three-year tax abatement program, it didn't move the needle.
Pass them around?
Now, the, uh.
Pass them around?
Yeah, it will. Same here, Lerta, it's already getting some traction.
I'm speaking as much to the current council and the current mayor and the current budget as I am to future. Because you step back a little, when you leave Act 47, you are still a, a city that needs to manage expenses at a higher level than revenue.
Act, Act 47 really doesn't give you much magical tools. It really doesn't. Not for the city of Scranton. Okay, this next chart here we show, this is, uh, your milage rates from 1990 to 2019. You'll see all of your, let's take 1990 for example. The, the tan bar, the brown bar is your land tax rate, this is revenue, which is broadly from revenue. And then your red or your gray bar is your, uh, your land, or no, the improvements. No, it flipped around, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you'll see, for example, 1990 to 1998, no tax increases. And if you look on the following page that's attached, you'll see that in the chart. Here's on page two. 1990, zero tax increases, property taxes, this is all property tax. So all your green markers then, you'll see are when the city increased property taxes. And the red is actually when the city decreased property taxes in 2011. But you'll see a trend here as the city goes on, three, four, five, six years, had a steady tax increase, or no tax increase, boom, a spike. Again, you go along, straight, or, uh, steady decrease, and then boom, you'll see this 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 tax increase, which was a total of 120%, was it?
120, yeah, 120.
In that 12, in that four-year period.
And don't forget, all the while you have zero increases in real estate taxes, and we're just focusing on tax rates because you have increasing expenditures.
Right.
Because there was expenditure control, but you have built-in costs because of the way you operate. You have contracted labor and you have consumables.
In, in that 2012 to 2016 period, as Jerry mentioned, you know how you're, we were upside down with the 8 million in property taxes and 22 in earned income tax. This is when the city became into the real world here and their property taxes are now above their earned income tax. That's what it took to do it. But you can see now, the city's at the point where they're on three years with no tax increase. So our point is onto the sustainability and going back to what you mentioned about reading off these double-digit punitive nature of double-digit real estate tax increases. That's the sustainability that we want to have happen and avoid those punitive double digits is by these little increment property tax increases, increases based on what, you know, unfortunately, your assessed value is going to your property.
I'll be, remember, the assessed value in 1992 is identical to what it is today, within a couple hundred thousand. So all those years of zero rate increases were causing you to have revenue decay. You went further and further into a hole. How did you cope with it? We have a, I think we have a chart here, the employee complement.
Yep.
You also coped with it by borrowing when it was easy to borrow in the, in the mid 2000s. You had a lot of, uh, short payments. We'd live every day with the short payment of workforce comp in the early 2000s. You weren't paying your bills. So there was things going on to address all those revenue decays, but it wasn't tax increases, and they weren't a responsible way to run the government. Now you have tax bases that are strong and you need to leverage tax bases. What you can't do is fall in the trap of saying, we're not gonna run our business model, we're going to somehow withhold from employees or withhold from the service sector because we don't wanna raise property taxes. The fact that you're raising property taxes is because your revenue model is decaying, not because you're spending too much.
So if we beat through the bush here, I guess, what you're telling us is we need to raise property taxes and 2.4%. Now, I know, simplistic, but I, I'll just, I can't speak for the rest of the council.
Well, not to bend in the mayor's budget, the mayor's budget, we accepted it, we gave a letter, but this is the, this is like our.
We discussed this before.
This is our sponsor.
And I understand that, but in this, I can't speak for my colleagues here, but this is my concern after going through this now several times, and I know I've said this in municipal zones and in mayor events. I understand there's a sale of one-time revenue with the sale of the refuse receivables, the amnesty program, the Garth conversion to the, uh, uh, real estate tax bill from the, uh, the refuse bill into the real estate tax bill. My concern, I've stated this in the last few weeks, if we, if that doesn't come to fruition, and it very well, that very well may happen, which will be great, but if it doesn't, or if it doesn't, it doesn't meet the projections that are in there, which could happen, and I mean, that is just the nature of the beast. My concern as a property owner is I would almost rather pay a little bit in an increase because we know it's coming based on what you have showed us here. There's gonna be green at some point. So I would rather pay $20 and be able to have budgeted rather than pay 57% or, and I'm, I'm just using this as an example, 19%, 22%, 5%. Because eventually, at some point in the next two or three years, we have to raise taxes.
Well, you hit a good point, Bill, because.
And again, I don't say that lightly because I don't wanna, I personally don't wanna do that, but it's my concern.
This is my, our perspective, you know, we, we see the one-time revenue and, and we have, that's fine, but throughout this history, Jerry's been here for the, the whole time of this 20, for, for Act 47. I've been with the department since 2005 and then with PEO, so we've seen this. All throughout those periods, you see those brown bars, one-time revenues, infusion of cash, selling of assets, that's all it was, living day by day. That's not sustainable, that's why you have the big increases. We, I, I agree with you there. And if it's not done now, that's what's gonna happen. And that's why we come up with this presentation.
But to their point though, uh, this year was different for a lot of different reasons. Number one, we, we wanna institute the payroll tax. That's a dramatic shift, and we're asking people to go along with that. We're also asking to move the refuse billing into the taxes. All right, that's another dramatic shift. So from my perspective, it wasn't a good year to add a tax increase with it because we're asking for all these seismic shifts in how we do business. So even though, and I think we're, we're accounting for the 2.4% well beyond the $780,000 that's projected. Uh, and Dave will show you data or information on, on how, why we're confident in the number in the budget. We have that information and we'll share that with you. Uh, so, um, that's one of the reasons. I don't not dispute that one bit. I think that's a sound practice as we move forward beyond this budget to start incorporating modest property tax increases where, where needed. I believe that is true, but I just thought this year was not the year to do that for a lot of different reasons.
You know, we see, this is the one-time revenue, like I mentioned in the past, has always been something, a quick fix for the city that got them through. And, and this is maybe to fix a cyclical bite or deficit, but you got next year, you got the following year, whatever, the same thing's gonna pass history of the city's habitual, this is inveterate, it's gonna happen in 2020, 2021, 2022. Then you're gonna contain, you're gonna have a structural budget deficit that's large. Now you got a smaller one, maybe it's, I don't even think of 2.3, you know, because whatever it is, but that's gonna grow over those periods. And that structural deficit is gonna get to the point where you're gonna have to man, to do those punitive double tax rate increases.
It's very manageable. You're in a good position now, you have a strong tax base. I think that the approach of the administration to clean up those past due delinquents by monetizing, by looking at a way to increase collection on the going-forward basis, by changing the way you charge for the service, uh, the mechanism you're using to charge for the service, those are all important to do now. But at the end of the day, when those are done and accomplished and you see the results, you're still stuck with this.
Because it's compounded.
This, this is not going away.
It's compounded each year, you know, that's.
We can't wait. We, in the, in the past, it has waited till compounding and then it becomes the political game of, well, I don't wanna raise taxes 10%, I'm gonna raise it 8%, when, had you done it over the course of a series, whether it's every other year, whether it's recognition recognition of expenditure reductions, but you just can't, you just can't sit back and pat ourselves on the back that we did not raise property taxes. You can't do that.
I think one of the major parts of this budget is the conversion, and I don't want to get off on a tangent with this, but I just want to make this one point, because I've talked to people just today, business owners, converting the refuse bill into the real estate tax bill. I have two concerns with that. Number one, if a business, like a restaurant, who has a private hauler, under this new program, it's my understanding now that they will get a, they'll have to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a service that they currently don't see. I don't know how that, number one, I'm sure that would challenge, and number two, I don't understand how that is fair.
And Bill, if I could address the challenge aspect, and again, policy, that's you guys, I'm telling you. Township of West Manchester v. Mayo, seven forty-six, A second, six-six-six, that's the site. This is a quote, "We hold that even if a resident does not generate any refuse or waste, the resident is still responsible for any service or charge lawfully imposed by municipality for the collection and disposal of refuse." They go on to state that even if a resident, regardless of how they personally choose to dispose of their refuse, they receive a benefit in the collection and disposal of refuse from other premises in the community. So legally, the city has a strong basis to do that.
Joe, what year was that, and what court is that in place?
That's the Commonwealth Court. I could get you the year in a second, but it was recently quoted and upheld again by the Commonwealth Court in May of two thousand and nineteen, in Borough of Phoenixville v. Pulea, P-U-L-E-A.
Thank you.
That might, and I understand that, I just seriously, from my own perspective, I do not understand, as a question of fairness, if I'm a business owner and I pay a private hauler to take away my garbage, why should I pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the city and I don't get the service? Number one, and number two, from an apartment building, who now, who has three units, they would get three separate refuse bills, and those people would pay three different garbage, three garbage bills. Now, from my understanding, only the building gets two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So how is that fair to a homeowner who pays, and now these people are, I mean, I think they're getting away with not paying?
Well, first of all, with sixty-five percent, so all those apartments, two out of three are, or two out of three are paying, the other third isn't paying. In fact, two out of three people we've identified as should be paying are paying. Thirty-three percent aren't paying. How is that fair to everybody else?
But now nobody pays though, correct?
Everybody, yeah, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty, twenty-three, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three property will pay.
But if you live in an apartment, and you put trash out, you now do not have to pay.
The tenant never paid anyway, the landlord paid.
No, but I lived in an apartment in two thousand, before I got married, and that was, the landlord came to me and said, "Here, this is the garbage bill I paid," or he made it into my rent.
Well, let me take a step back. You know, way back in the beginning of time, when there was not a refuse bill, the refuse was in your taxes. Those commercial property owners and those landlords were paying it in their property taxes. And then we pulled it out. We didn't actually pull it out, we just added a fee. So I think that's one of the problems. And I think the other thing is, we could take that five-point-six million dollars that we're projecting in revenue, and we could put it right in the tax bill right now, in a millage rate. The problem with that is, we have to have a certain millage rate to do that. For the little, the property owner that has a small parcel, it might cost them an extra one-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year in taxes. That commercial property owner that has a large building downtown, they might be paying three thousand dollars instead of two-fifty. And we could do that. And we could achieve what we want to achieve. This is what we thought was the fair way to go about doing it. The other side of it is, we're adding a component where we're going to have electronic recycling for commercial property owners. So they're going to get value back from the two-fifty. So that's not, you know, there's something there for them as well. The other side of it is, you know, the two-fifty that we're putting in the tax bill, is collected at a ninety percent rate versus a sixty-five percent rate. And we know the universe, it's twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three.
But do you think there's a scenario with, I don't disagree with doing this, but I disagree with some of the effects that it's going to have, as I just stated. But do you think that there's a possibility that we collect real estate taxes at ninety percent? If we do this, will that, could that have the possibility now of bringing that rate down? Because in the past, you could pay your garbage bill one-fifty and then pay another one-fifty, so people had a chance to budget for it. I mean, do you, I mean, there's a possibility that there would be a negative effect?
Well, it'd be built-in, well, a couple things will happen. Number one, we'll get an infusion in February, March, because the taxes that are in your escrow account with banks, if you get a mortgage, they'll be paid earlier. So we'll get an infusion we didn't have before. Secondly, it's up to the individual property owner when they pay their taxes. If they pay it early, they get a two percent discount. If you pay it late, they get a two percent penalty. So they have all year to pay the taxes.
Now, if my dad has a, or my uncle has a garage on a lot, he has to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars on the garage?
Well, this is an assessed valuation, the way it's written right now, as you would. Now, the question would be, if that's an adjacent property, if it's right next to the property, he could annex that, and put it in his property, and then it would have to pay it.
And here's the other concern I have. It's been so dysfunctional over the last few years, even the way that we're doing it now with, and you were aware of this from being on council, with people getting garbage bills when they shouldn't get garbage bills. All that, the whole mess that was there the last few years. Are you, are we positive, and I'm sure you've had conversations with the people that will be involved in this, but are you positive that Jill Smith, who has a vacant lot, four vacant lots, is not going to get four garbage bills now, and then have to come down to City Hall or wherever and say, "Oh, by the way, this is a vacant lot?" Because I know, I've heard from people, they've been put through the wringer on this type of stuff.
Oh, and listen, we have a bad system, and now it's broken, we know that. We have sixteen-point-eight million reasons why we should get out of that system, because that's what we have in uncollectibles. As far as the vacant lot property is concerned, the only properties that are identified are properties with improvements on them. That's a twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three. So if they're vacant land, they're not part of that mix, so they should never get a bill. That should never be included. And I'm not saying that it can never happen, because it's government after all, and then things happen, but all things being equal, that, it should never happen like it happens now.
And then my other concern was, we're doing this under the umbrella of major litigation with the refuse fee. And I think council was always told in the last few years, even when you were in council, you can't do anything with the refuse fee because of the litigation. As far as I know, it's still ongoing. So wouldn't it be more prudent and smarter to wait until the litigation was resolved before you made a move like this?
It may be better to talk about that in executive session, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah. I'm advocating on that, but yeah, I agree.
But that's my concern.
I could confirm that it's on the case regard, the grifida case is still ongoing. So that's, I believe that's as far as we should talk.
Yeah, I just, I know we should talk about it in executive session, but just to make the point that, you know, when the case is settled, what if they came out and said, "Well, you have to lower it to one-seven-five." Well, then you have to lower it again, I mean...
Well, I believe that we have a very strong case that the five-point-six million dollars is not the true cost, it's actually much higher than that, so that's, that's the bottom line.
And then in terms of, you know, you're saying revenue, 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 we're low, I know you're going to increase the universe of collections, but, you know, we're lowering it fifty dollars when we're in need of revenue. What if it doesn't, that's my concern, what if it doesn't pan out, it gets challenged? I know you stated that case, but...
It's very, I am very confident that it would withstand the challenge.
And I will tell you this, you know, that what's in the budget is five-point-six million dollars.
Right.
Now, how we get there, will be up to legislation in January, they'll come down, and will say, "Here's legislation that says two-fifty goes in the tax bill," or legislation that basically is a status quo, three hundred dollars, just so you just know. So when you run this budget, you're voting on the five-point-six million dollars, getting to that number either way.
Now, will we receive that legislation before the end of the year?
No, because that wouldn't, won't play out until after the first of the year. And that's when you would have gotten the refuse legislation anyway. Every year we used to get the legislation for three hundred dollar fee. It would be the same type of legislation for this to be incorporated into the tax bill.
May I ask quickly, where did the two-fifty come from? Is it just, did we kind of pick it, or is there any type of data or analysis behind it?
Twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three divided into five-point-six million dollars.
That's what we did.
The three-point-bay recycling program. Could you explain that, the electronic recycling program? I know you responded to one question, but I didn't have time to look through them, because we just received them. So can you expand upon that? Because I think we've had, I think we've had, even though we've hired Joyce to talk, I think some progress has been made, but it has not been the greatest, we have not made the greatest amount of progress. So I mean, convince me that this will work.
What I'd like to say is, I really like this format. This is the first time in four years I haven't had to say anything.
We'll change it. You haven't been in the hot seat yet.
And this is the first time in four years, I think, that we've been able to have this conversation and have this...
And that's why, that's why I asked you guys to do it, because I felt it was easier to have a conversation sometimes. Obviously, we can't meet as a group legally, with a sunshine act, so this is the best way to do it, I think, yeah. All right, go ahead, Dave.
We've evaluated electronic recycling. We've met with vendors that provide that service. I don't think there's any question, and certainly can be attested to, by the most recent attempt at having an electronic recycling drop-off and what occurred there. There's a huge amount of demand for it. So there was certainly some sensibility in trying to couple that with this prospective change, because there's a demand, not only from a residential standpoint, but more particularly small commercial, maybe not so much industrial. So having the ability to offer this in conjunction with this change seemed to make some sense. Costs, you know, all we can do is provide an estimate right now. And the estimate was really based on anticipated tonnage, based on costs that a specific provider would assess, based on whatever that tonnage would be. I mean, that could be variable. You can get started with the program and find out that three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars is going to go in one drop-off, and then you'll have to budget accordingly. But we think it's realistic enough to get the program started, and again, certainly there's a sufficient amount of demand out there for that. We've had discussions with the Department of Environmental Protection, the agency which would have to approve the program. So we did meet with them, discussed the electronic recycling drop-off program. Certainly, they have an interest in seeing it occur. Again, there's a demand, not only within the city, but countywide. We did have a preliminary discussion with county officials as well, but it was very preliminary. They certainly have an interest in it. Whether we would be able to couple with them in order to provide it jointly is a question mark at this point. But the fact that we would look at advancing it within the context of how this program would work relative to refuse billing, provides a certain measure of value that you might be looking to achieve. Kind of back that up a step, and one of the points that I had made with the presentation during the school district forum on payroll preparation tax, was just an evaluation of taxing efficiency. And so we talked about the business privilege and mercantile tax, and how that performs from an efficiency standpoint. And what I looked at was the delinquent to current collection percentages. Looking at BP and MRR compared, delinquent compared to current, you had a collection percentage of eleven-point-six-six. So your delinquent collections were, when you look at the delinquent to current collection percentage of BP to MRR, it was eleven-point-six-six percent. So two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars in delinquent versus two-point-two-six million in current. The issue is even more acute relative to refuse. So if you really look at delinquent collections on a fiscal year basis or calendar year basis, all you've got to do is look at the budget, you're at about thirty-two percent. I mean, what that screams at everyone is that this is a system that just doesn't work. So I think the city has looked at alternatives in the past. At one time, it was an in-house process. The collection percentages were not all that favorable. The system was provided to a vendor from a third-party standpoint to try and see if collections can be improved on a current-year basis. That wasn't successful. This is an effort to try and think outside the box. I mean, what I'll tell you is that if we're not creative, we're not going to prosper. It can't be the same old. It's just not going to work. I'm not saying this might be the most favorable solution out there, but it's one that at least represented to us, that we can achieve that level of efficiency in collections that we needed in order to make the whole process a bit more effective. So it was our attempt at trying to put this together. Now, I will kind of asterisk reference, the budget is not the operative legislative document on this. It references the program and identifies it based on current value that we're looking at collecting, but that current value can be achieved in a number of different methods. So the operative legislation would be the refuse legislation that would be sent out.
Now, when you, back to the recycling program, we only have one recycling coordinator, correct?
Correct.
So would that, that person would be in charge of this program?
Well...
Most of these are turkey, I think.
I think relative to electronic recycling, you know, we would certainly have some support from the consultant that's provided, as well as using our Department of Public Works. Obviously, logistically, we'd really have to take a closer look at how this can be, how this can be operated, because of the logistical problems they had with the most recent drop-off. So we want to learn from some of those things to see how this can be provided. You'd have to have limitations, there's absolutely no question. So your limitations would be, at a specific time, there would be so many items that you can bring for recycling. You couldn't open it up, or someone can bring a dump truck full of items in to be recycled. I mean, that just wouldn't work. So you've got, the mechanics of the program would certainly have to be determined, but a point well made, the recycling program that we have right now has been deemed deficient by the Commonwealth. We've made some improvements in capturing data, but we're still not achieving the recycling levels where I think we should be. Now, what I would like to add is, the concept behind this was multi-phase. So it wasn't just taking the refuse cost and embedding it into the real estate tax bill. That was phase one. Phase two, when we sat in on these presentations, was to try and migrate to a hybrid pay-as-you-throw program. So your hybrid would set a base, a base cost. That base cost would be, in theory, embedded into the real estate tax bill. Your variable would be per bag. That then captures some of what you referenced, relative to individuals that might reside in apartments, that might not be captured when you have a flat rate included in the real estate tax bill. So that, I think, would expand what the concept of what you would consider fairness, because now you'd have a flat rate that would give you sustainable revenue, and yet your per bag would then add to whatever the total revenue would be that's required, based on usage. So now it becomes quasi, a quasi-usage-based program.
And we would still be doing that off of that five-million-dollar number, right? Everything would be injected against that?
This is, it's what I would call a quasi-enterprise fund.
Let me interrupt, because he's going into expenditure reduction, because that's one of the opposite objectives of the garbage problem. But I want to leave you with two other things we brought. I'm going to leave you two other things, go back to the discussion. I don't want to leave the impression that this is a revenue problem, that you need to simply ignore the expenditure side. I want to explain, however, that the constant refrain of, "We need to cut expenses, we need to cut expenses," does have a logical limit. I want to show, we handed out the employee count when Act forty-seven started, you had five-hundred-and-ninety-five employees, you now have four-hundred-and-eighty-seven employees. When there was fire station closings and there was layoffs, I forget when it was, 2011 or 2010, the public spoke very loudly, they wanted the services, they wanted their stations open, they wanted a compliment, they wanted police in the streets and fire, Dave mentioned the public safety. Obviously, the citizens want refuse at an unlimited pace, it seems, without having to pay as you throw. Those are all issues that, when you look at expenditure reductions, you're going to have to realize, citizens are demanding services, and you have to give it to them at the best you can, and controlling the expenditures. But just saying expenditures can be controlled, and we don't have to worry about the revenue side, would be the wrong impression for you to have, as it is the wrong impression for me to say, "I just want you to raise revenue." It's a balancing act. You just have to know your constraints. I'll leave you with this. Your population, there is one more thing we'll pass out if you want to take it. The population of the city of Scranton today equals the population in eighteen ninety. The infrastructure of eighteen ninety is still here, all the growing infrastructure, the homes, the businesses that were built, that's all still here through your peak in the nineteen thirties. You now have legacy issues to deal with, you have legacy costs, so when you talk about expenditures, you have to consider you also have a smaller tax base, and you have remaining infrastructure that still has to be maintained and paid for. So I warn you again, simply saying we can balance budgets by cutting expenditures, you need a balanced approach, and I think that's what I'd like to leave you with. A balanced budget comes with a balanced approach. Unfortunately, I have to be fifty miles away, unless I'm allowed.
Thank you both very much, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Gary, one quick question. Have you guys done any analysis in terms of how reassessment would affect taxes or anything like that? like that?
Well, we have shown many times that the, I don't have the numbers on my fingertips. Reassessment does not generate new wealth for you. You're required to have a cap on the windfall, because assessments will rise, you'll have to lower your revenue. The problem with the delay of the reassessment is that market value, while your assessed value has been flat, I forget what the market value growth is, it has not been flat. And you can look at that, I've done that chart somewhere. I think at one point, it was, you would have at least 35 percent more real estate revenue if assessed values approached market value, as they do in Luzern County, where they're around 100 percent, 107 or so. Here, it's 17 percent, if I remember my numbers from the reassessment debate. But you would have had 35 percent more revenue without doing anything on your real estate tax. That's almost $10 million, more than $10 million on a $33 million base, if market values were reflected in assessment. The problem with the reassessment is the inequity. People that are benefiting from the system are paying less in property taxes. We showed this to council years ago. You look at the median tax bill, even at these higher millage rates, your median tax bill is less than $750 for city operations.
So then...
That's the problem.
So then Mike, okay, what are you going to do?
Yeah, we have a date.
And have we thought about how reassessment would affect the refuges aspect in terms of improvements? And I bring this up because legally, Clifton v. Allegheny County, 969, A2nd, 1197, 2009, the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania specifically brings up in footnote 39, the fact that Lackawanna County hasn't had a reassessment since 1973. Any individual in Lackawanna County that tries to challenge the assessment, I believe it would be, it would be an easy victory for them. So I think it's something that we really have to forecast and think about going forward, because it's, a challenge by anyone, I think, would result in a forced reassessment.
Well, I don't want to get too off on the way to that, because we have other things to talk about, but...
I just wanted to bring that up, because I don't know how that would affect the refuges and the property taxes.
It is in the courts right now. The election just happened at the county level. Two of the three commissioners that were elected favor reassessment. It's going to happen, so we'll let it go at that. I want to touch base a little bit more on what Dave just said, though. You know, this is more of a holistic approach to putting the money back, or the refuges built back in the taxes, because if the new administration elects to proceed with the pay-as-you-throw for 2021, you are setting the stage for a hybrid plan where you could have per-bag and also a smaller fee. And what that per-bag would do is reduce the 250 to a lesser level, maybe possibly even cut it in half, and then you pay a per-bag. And then that would get to the end user, because the end user would be people in the apartments, people in single-family homes, the seniors that pull one bag out every two weeks. You know, it's far more fair, but that's an educational process and a discussion for another day.
And I guess my concern here is that because we're now transitioning into, like, we're on the cusp of having a new administration, we do have, obviously, still have financial difficulties, even though we've made, I think, a lot of progress. Taking some of these steps right now in light of, you know, especially even what Pell had just said, that my concern is, like, I think what they're saying is you should raise taxes 2.4 percent, if I'm hearing them correctly.
Again, it's a very simplistic approach that they took, but they just took two numbers and subtracted, and it got $700,000, and added 2.4 percent, and they're not counting for what the budget says, which is other rationale to offset that. You know, and sound rationale, by the way. You know, and one of them is the $2.3 million for sale of the receivables.
So can you, in layman's terms, because council has to explain this, and the public is here, and obviously, hopefully, they'll be watching on TV. Dave, can you explain that, because people have come up, what sale of receivables, what does that mean? A lot of people don't have any clue what it is. So can you explain, if that does, this process does go through, explain it in layman's terms as exactly what happens?
You're going to take dollars that are owed you and sell them to a third party who would then collect them. Because of the risk in collecting them, generally, they're not going to give you what would be considered par value for $1 for every dollar in receivable. They're going to give you a percentage of that. So you'll see in the initial questions you had relative to tax adjustments, there's a proposal in there that we received from Municipal Revenue Services relative to the sale of receivables. I think it'll answer a lot of those questions. Basically, they're looking at a certain percentage of every dollar that's purchased, and I think it may be 50 cents on the dollar. It's a process that works, but it's complicated, and I know you're getting tired of hearing me say that, because everything associated with this budget is complicated, but it's complicated because of the lien priority that refuse delinquencies have versus real estate tax delinquencies. And that kind of mixes into the percentage and how the receivables are being purchased. So the receivable sale proposal that we see combines a percentage, the sale of a certain percentage of real estate tax receivables and a certain percentage of refuse receivables. I'd suggest we take a look at it, and then we can talk about it.
So it's not solely revenue, it's revenue and real estate?
In that proposal, it is, only because, at least in my estimation, that's where you're going to get the most favorable return on the dollar.
So it's both?
It could be both.
Could be both, okay.
Right. It could be just one, but I think you're going to realize less of a return just on the sale. Now, again, it's based on just that one proposal.
And do you have to do an RFP for that eventually? Because we did this a few years ago, right?
We did it in 2015.
With the real estate, yeah. And it worked very well, by the way.
So do you have to do an RFP for this, then?
That I'm not sure of. Yeah, that I'm really not sure of. I think we'd certainly want to investigate it. I started with this firm because we worked with them in 2015 on the sale of real estate tax receivables. There's very few in the Commonwealth that actually do that, and they work specifically with municipal, with local governments, both school district and municipal. So they were as good a place to start as any, because they understand the receivables process on a local government level. So I thought that would be the best place to start, with an intelligent discussion, because they understand the operation.
But that would seem to be the baseline, the 2.3. I mean, there's also an opportunity to do a full amnesty program as well, which could drive even higher dollars.
One of the questions I had was, so that figure, the sale of assets that you had put in the budget, is that both the sale of receivables and the amnesty program, or is that just sale of receivables? Where did that...
Well, and my answer was, the amnesty program at this point is not really quantifiable. Now, I think it's going to take more evaluation. We know there's a number out there. I had contacted one city that had a refuse amnesty program, the city of Monessin. They really were able to share very little information, but the numbers were significantly lower than what we were looking at. So it's going to take some investigation. I think probably the sequence of events should be initially the investigation of the amnesty program. And depending upon how that would work logistically and what return you could realize, then I would maybe look at the sale of receivables next. And again, you've got some complexity to this, because you've got a third party that's collecting delinquent real estate taxes and refuse receivables. And we had talked about a certain element of compensation due them based on costs that were fronted in order to be able to file liens, so on and so forth. So you've got to factor in what would be due that third party if you actually sold receivables. Now, that was part of the discussion with Municipal Revenue Services, because they've worked with that third-party format before, and it seems to work okay. It actually worked well when we sold real estate tax receivables in 2015. I'm not quite concerned about that. I don't really know what the impact would be on an amnesty program, because certainly, based on every dollar you get, there's going to be a level of compensation that's got to go to whomever might be owed money based on filing liens, costs, so on and so forth. It's got to be evaluated for...
So then that figure is solely the sale of receivables, it's not the amnesty program? Because it can't be one...
Yeah, but we may find out the amnesty...
But it could be.
It could be, yeah. Could the amnesty program be more successful? We may find out that...
Because one person could walk in, or a thousand could walk in. We have no way of predicting that.
So let's say you had an amnesty program, and you took in $1,000.
Right.
Okay, you're still $1,500,000 plus in all, so you're going to have to sell receivables.
I understand this. I think an amnesty program in some form or fashion would make sense because you're not going to... But what I'm hearing is maybe complicated.
Well...
And my concern is that maybe it doesn't work out. It gets complicated, as we had discussed with the sale of receivables, and maybe we don't get that amount. So my concern is, sitting here next year on council, that we're looking at, as Jerry and Matt had mentioned earlier, we're looking at a bigger deficit by not making sure that we have revenue that's...
And I would counter that by saying, first of all, the budget process, plan, construct, adjust. There hasn't been a year that's gone by where I haven't had to adjust something because of the variable process involved with the execution of a budget. It's just the way it works.
Right.
Now, some of the revenue components are relatively conservative, and I tried to do that as a hedge, just in order to reduce that variable on the sale of receivables. So I didn't overextend on earned income tax. I also really did not create a licenses and permits budget that was reflective of what was just an astounding amount of revenue, both current and prior year. And again, the complexity to it is, we're going through a licenses and permits departmental evaluation, so you might be looking at resetting fees. So I don't want to extend out too far on the fees if you're going to wind up resetting some. Earned income tax, I learned my lesson from this year. You know, Birkheimer said, "Here's what we think the range is," and I said, "No, it's out here." I said, "You know, you've got a significant increase in payrolls throughout the country." I said, "I just can't visualize that the number could be that conservative." Well, they were right. So in this case, the budgeting of earned income tax was based on their range, which I still believe is relatively conservative, based on all of the data that we're seeing nationwide on the increase in payrolls. And those increases are not just necessarily on the low end, they're starting to migrate up the chain on the higher-end payrolls as well. So I think that data is favorable. It should lend itself to performance in that budget category. But again, you've got variables. We, I think we know what the collections will be relative to what will be the final leg of business privilege and mercantile. Relatively flat, but predictable. I think we have a pretty good pivot in understanding on what the collections would be with the initial run of the payroll preparation tax, but it's new. So I could look at all the data I want to look at and calculate that percentage based on that data, but the end result is going to be different because it's in practice.
I understand that. I agree with it, but isn't there a concern, then, that wouldn't it be more practical to make sure that you have the revenue there? Like, if you were to have a moderate tax increase, and if everything else comes to fruition, great, but we would be, like, almost in a safe zone? Do you understand what you're saying? Does that make sense?
Well, he took a conservative approach on all the other line items, so that's sort of what was built into that, into the budget, to be able to meet expectations. So if somebody goes a little sideways, we'll connect.
We had, as we have had for the last several years, these discussions. And I hate to split the difference by saying I kind of agree with both. I recognize, you know, the mayor's sensitivity to a lot of adjustments within the budget. And if we were going to execute on what might be a relatively small increase, and, for example, in the land value, if that adjustment was going to be valued at between $500,000 and $750,000, given the context of all of the working mechanisms in this budget, are we better off just not going with that kind of adjustment? I certainly agree with that logic. You know, there's the other side of me that has to execute on the budget, saying, "Yeah, but I'd like to have that $750,000 in my pocket." Not literally. But having that as a foundation would, you know, would certainly be helpful. I think, you know, Jerry Cross is correct. The city's going to have incremental adjustments consistently, maybe not every year, probably every other year. I think it's just going to be a fact of life, because the problem you have goes back to what was discussed initially. You've had a $10 million reduction in your assessed valuation over a five-year period. That's huge! I mean, so I'm sitting down to construct a budget every year. I'm starting on all. So I'm starting out with a negative value at a constant millage. That's not a great place to start. The concern that I would have is, as Jerry had pointed out, your earned income tax values have performed reasonably well over that period he analyzed. I would be concerned if we start to see some plateauing in earned income tax collections, and I referenced that concept within the narrative of the budget. Those are your principal revenue drivers. You've got one that's deficient if the other one begins to plateau. So it goes back to the discussion on creating effectiveness and some stability. Payroll preparation tax versus business privilege and mercantile tax, more predictable. Creates a more stable value, which is important within the context of the budget. The same could be said on more predictable refuse collections. So we're kind of circling right back to that concept again. It helps to support what the two principal revenue drivers would be in the budget.
Can I switch gears one second? Because I don't want to lose you to without asking a question. To me, one of the most important, and I'll use the term alarming, things in the budget was the healthcare costs. That has me chasing my tail, literally. And Dave, I looked at some of the explanation you gave us, thank you, that the percentages may be a little bit deceiving...
They're skewed.
But the number won't be. It's still plus $1,800,000.
Well, what I would look at is the total value. So, you know, we had spoken with a healthcare consultant, I think I referenced the discussion in one of the responses. So the problem that I had in this budget with projecting healthcare costs was, typically, I'm looking at quarter-ending values and then using a 25 percent factor in order to give me year-ending values. Well, I didn't have all of that data available by the time the budget was constructed, so what I should have done was used the variance in there, and I didn't do that. So when I created this budget, for example, with fire department, you're looking at it and saying, "That's a 39 percent increase." It's not a 39 percent increase, because you're starting out with a value that was lower than what it should have been anyway. So going into the 2020 budget, it's going to be more predictable. Now, that doesn't minimize the fact that healthcare costs are significant. They're a significant component of the budget. We're self-funding, so you've got variables there that in some cases, you're not able to control entirely. But it is a significant number, but that percentage is skewed by what you're comparing it to.
And I can accept that explanation, but then again, it still doesn't take away the number, which is going to be close to 1.8 million. And then I had asked for, and I think we had said there's nothing in writing, Millennium, or Millennium, I believe, is that our third-party healthcare consultant?
Right.
Do they come in and do a written analysis of this, so we have some concrete foundation or basis to look at to see? I just don't know how we can allow this to keep going up unrecognized or without a third party looking at it and giving us some expert opinion.
Well, and they do. I mean, generally, we meet with them... I mean, generally, we meet with them.
Okay.
Or we discuss the trends in healthcare and the cost adjustment that we would be using going into a specific budget. Could they prepare an analysis? Absolutely, they could.
I do think it's due diligence. I don't know how I look at a taxpayer and automatically rubber stamp an increase when it's consistently gone up. And then when I looked at the reasoning, a lot of it was we had underbudgeted previous years. Is that just, again, the unknowns?
Well, no, I'm not saying previous years. What I'm saying is this budget year.
Oh, yeah, but when I went back and looked, I think, at a previous year, it had also said that it was just underbu... The rising care of health costs was due to underbudgeting it previous year.
It was based on the percentage increases in healthcare costs versus what was projected within that budget year. I don't think it's a secret to anyone. For a period of time and up until really within the last year or two, healthcare costs were increasing exponentially. So you're trying to chase that percentage within your budget, which is very difficult. I think at least the data that we're getting right now is that the increases are more predictable. There are, they remain increases and they remain significant and we're working off of a base that's a relatively high number. But at least they're not double-digit increases.
Yeah, so in 2018 and 2019, it was 16,123,000. Then in 2019, it's 16,888. This is the estimated budget, by the way, not accurate expenses. And now this year for 2020, we're going to do 18,644. I mean, the numbers are just outrageous. And sometimes a little bit of knowledge is a dangerous thing. This is what I do for a living. So I deal with these healthcare companies all day, every day, and I see what they can do with creativity and ingenuity when they come in and they look at things and then they write reports that we can take a look at. And I don't deny anyone the right to adequate healthcare coverage. I truly don't. I think it's an important benefit to anyone and everyone. But I do think the city has an outright duty to try and control these costs better.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think anyone would disagree with that.
What are we doing to do that, though, is my question? Like, how do I look at this number and then look at people and say, I'm going to vote in favor of that? What have we done to try and counteract this? That's what I need to know.
Well, we've looked at the analytics of how we could reduce costs. We brought in the analytics in order to try and achieve some savings on the prescription side of it. And that has worked very favorably. We do have data that can be provided to council to review. We've tried to improve the safety protocol within the city. So, and that was part of the Labor and Industry Initiative. I think all of these tend to factor into the sustainability of the plan and an effort to try and control costs to some extent. But remember, we are self-funded too. So that creates challenges in itself. But I think the necessity of the city to understand how these costs are derived has some value. So I would tend to agree with you. There's probably some advantage to sitting down with the healthcare consultant to really get a better understanding of how these costs compare to our peers that are self-funded. Are there any other recommendations that that party would have to try and control costs? I could say honestly, it's not as though we've avoided that discussion. We have looked at certain initiatives to try and improve cost control. But it's a challenge.
And no great paper trail, I guess, is one of my problems, right? Because I'm sitting here now relatively new. I'm here four months and I assume there'd be some report from Millennium to kind of justify this type of expenditure for me. And there's not. And that's difficult because I do think it's incumbent on this city, again, in terms of due diligence, to make sure that we have an expert coming in looking at these. I mean, that 1.8 million number is just huge.
Again, the information is out there. And if you wanted to drill down into that specific component and say, I want to understand it a little bit better.
I do.
You can.
Oh, through whom?
Well, we could request information to give you some context to what those numbers actually are.
Uh-huh. Okay.
I mean, I think it gives you an understanding of the context. Does it change the numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe not, but at least maybe you get a different perspective on what they are.
Well, honestly, everything I've heard tonight has given me a lot of different perspectives. That's very useful, like hearing you speak and hearing Pell speak. It's very informative and helpful. So I think anything they are able to provide.
Sure.
Obviously, in writing, it'd be better, but if it's not in writing, it has to be oral. That's okay, too. But that number bothers me.
Yeah, and that should be relatively easy.
How, Dave, I can't find it right now, but on the healthcare aspect, you had mentioned something in here about retiree healthcare and addressing that.
Well, all I indicated was that the discussion, well, there's two ways to look at that. Within the context of the other post-employment benefit costs. So certainly what's referenced in the budget narrative is we're looking at creating a trust fund that would help the city create some sustainability in offsetting some of those retiree costs because they are relatively significant. And what you'll see when you review the audit is now your accrued other post-employment benefit liability is now reported as a long-term liability. And for us, that's over your actuary liability. For us, it's over $200,000. I mean, that's a significant increase in your long-term liabilities. So does the creation of a $6 million OPEB trust go far in reducing that liability? Not initially, but you're going to try and do the same thing you do with a pension fund. You're going to build that value and then try and use some of that income to offset your annual costs. So that's one component of retiree healthcare. The other component that I had indicated will certainly require some evaluation is the administration that will be seated next year will wind up being in a position where a number of contracts are going to have to be renegotiated. So we recall that with the last renegotiation of, in this case, police and fire, that there were a number of adjustments, many of which were very favorable to the city. And we had talked about that. But the one number that I would certainly be curious to quantify more is what impact did that have based on changes in retiree healthcare costs?
Well, I remember, and I think it's one of the reasons you and I had voted against the contracts were that, and I hope I'm saying this the right way, but I think what happened was the administration had given back a benefit in retiree healthcare. Now, in the contract, their explanation was that it was only for a certain number of employees, but they were never listed in the contract. So I think our concern was that opens it up then to everyone. And it was, and I think even Pell had made a comment at some point, that it could be considered a budget buster in future years. So is that what you're referring to?
Well, I don't know if I use that term. That is what I'm referring to.
Okay.
I would say it's certainly worth quantifying. And I think there's an advantage in creating projections to quantify so you can understand what you just said. What are your future costs? Now, you know, it was a trade-off. There were certainly some benefits and some advantages. That was one that creates a cost factor to the city going forward that necessarily wasn't there previously. Is it going to have a significant impact beyond what the projections were when it was renegotiated? Again, the impact over that defined period was limited. But beyond that, is it going to be limited? From my perspective, if I'm sitting down and I'm looking at renegotiating a contract, I'd want to understand that. Maybe it is and maybe it isn't.
And one of the issues, and not to get off on a tangent on the union contracts, because I don't want to stray too far.
No, we want to stay to the budget.
Right. But I just want to make one comment. I saw what you sent me, because I had been asking constantly for an analysis of what the actual benefits were in terms of cost for the renegotiated contracts. Now, this is just my view on this. I maybe could be wrong. I had saw the document that you had sent me. I had seen that previously. I have a few problems with it. Number one, and I'm not questioning the numbers behind it, but number one, it doesn't even say who created it. I know you said it was maybe the chief from the police department. And I think the same thing from the fire department. So it came from within those two departments, this analysis from a few years ago. My concern was that I thought it should have been an analysis performed either by an independent third-party or by the business administrator's office because of the union issue. Not that they would skew the numbers or anything, but if you're the union, you are, you know, you're coming from a different place than management. So the lines there, I thought, even a few years ago, were blurred. I mean, that's just a statement. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'm not going to disagree with you entirely, but I'm also not going to defeat the point with you in this context.
Yeah. I just wanted to, I know that, I just wanted to make that statement because I know that is something you would say.
Understood.
I don't want to, I have more questions, but you...
I have to go because I'm already about 20 minutes past when I'm supposed to be here. I'll be in big trouble right now for some other reason. But I have to say this, to me, has had a ton of value, and I will be around for the next time, but I think this is something hopefully the next administration will continue doing because I think it has great value to have this conversation instead of a monologue or have a dialogue instead. So I don't know. Do you have to go?
Five minutes.
All right. I apologize. I mean, it is what...
I guess before you leave, is there anywhere, and I mean, I didn't yet have a chance because we just got to review the answers that they had given to our questions. But is there anywhere in this budget, I'm just looking from a capital expenditure standpoint, is there anywhere where council can cut without obliterating programs that are already underway? I guess that was going to be my question to you because my concern is that, all right, if we're not going to raise taxes 2.4% or whatever that is, is there anywhere where we can shave off a little bit in case those numbers don't come in as projected?
Again, going back to what I said before, some of the projections were relatively conservative. It should give us the ability to adjust. But I had also said that relative to the creation of a budget, plan, execute, and adjust, there is always the ability to adjust. I would only issue a cautionary note. I would probably say that these same discussions may have occurred previously where what can we do to minimize capital expenditures, which was the reason why, you know, we all walked in here, yourself included. You had refuse trucks where an employee would get in and their foot would go through the floor. You have firehouses that weren't improved since 1960s. So I would caution using capital expenditures as an area where you can adjust. Now, we have made a lot of strides, not necessarily by allocating dollars annually. We've combined that. So relative to the firehouse improvement project, we were able to use the amount to fund that as a tack-on to a refunding issue, which really didn't impact debt service significantly at all. We've also used amortized commercial leases in order to fund some programs as well. So I think we've balanced the capital improvement initiatives within the city. And I think to some extent, we've tried to minimize some of those. So the fire department capital budget had gone down significantly because we're not looking at significant acquisitions. You know, the one item or the one area where we're going to continue to see capital investment is probably information technology. I've referenced this before. The information technology is going to drive the operation of the city going forward. We're seeing that with different services that we're either evaluating or being provided. I mean, we continually go through servers because of data storage issues. The technology becomes outdated relatively quickly and we have to go through a replacement of hardware. But even just the video wall, deployment of cameras, these all tie in together with the city operation. The use of GPS system, all of that falls within the hub of information technology. That's where I think the city's going to continue to see investment. I think to a great extent, we've replaced a lot of the fleet in public works, in the police department, certainly in the fire department. So your investments there are going to be incremental. A number of the facilities have been improved. And then we're working on this ESCO lease right now to improve energy efficiency within the police department, public works, and also the public safety building. That'll help to improve the efficiency of those buildings, but also to help drive down costs. So I think everyone's done a really good job in trying to improve the capital component of the city to the point where it's not going to be a mad rush to try and take care of a lot of deficiencies that we have across the board.
And obviously, the shortfall has been accounted for. You know, by conservative estimates in certain categories, I mean, it's been accounted for. The budget is balanced. So it's not like it's not balanced. I thought that Pell's presentation was a little simplistic because he basically took the IT and just deducted that increase from the shortfall or the reduction in personal operating increase. I mean, that's all they did. And they said, that's our shortfall, you know? But they're not accounting for the changes that were done in the budget itself.
Right. So... Debt service. Obviously, we all understand that it's decreased by 30% over the last few years, but it increased in 2019. And I think it's because of the pension obligation note.
Right.
Can you just explain that?
Yeah, that's kind of an asterisk reference, okay? Because it would be considered almost what I would call self-litigating debt. So basically, you borrowed the money and simplistically took the balance and put it in an account. So most of what's needed to pay that off is in the account. Okay? So your debt service is showing an amount of, I think, $6 million that would increase. Those dollars are actually sitting in that account. The difference is going to come when, and probably not this year, because it can't be paid off until the issue relative to sewer easements is settled. But very likely in 2021, there's going to be a margin or a net value. So you're going to have what remains in that account that's been earning interest at, I think it was 1.65%, 1.75%. The difference is going to come in in what is the difference between the interest cost on the note and what you've accrued in interest in that savings account? And that will have to be a budget component in 2021. But otherwise, it's a pass-through. It's a pass-through. You can't look at it necessarily as an increase in debt service because it's not coming out of revenue generated via the operating budget. It's actually coming out of an account that's escrowed.
So when this happened, I think, was it 2018?
Right.
I think the plan was to pay the note off in two years, so...
Well, the note has a three-year maturity. So it's really contingent upon getting the issue taken care of relative to the sewer litigation. And that's about as far as I'm going to go into that. But a resolution of that matter frees up those dollars. Then at that point, I'd say, just pay the note off. Now, again, if you're not factoring whatever that net is, that difference in margin in the budget, you're probably going to wait until maybe January of 2021 to pay it off.
Expenditures, I think we often question about the savings. Expenditures, I think we all have questions about the sacred grant. I know that the.
Yeah, I've got to go over actually, but. Can we get this one quick out of you?
See, I, I think our concern is, I don't want to speak for everyone, but yeah, so we know the sacred grant expired.
Correct.
From the, from what my memory and what I had read in, in the archives of the current times, the potential plan was then, so the mayor hired him to get that 14 firemen, 14, 15. And we, or I was under the impression that, and what was written in the newspaper was that if we didn't get the grant again, that we would consider either laying off those firemen or absorbing them into our budget. I see that we're absorbing them into the budget. So.
Correct.
Okay. So can you just give a rationale behind that? Because my concern is that obviously we have rising legacy costs and personnel costs. So why would that be a sound decision?
Well, all I'll add to that is before understanding what flexibility you have, you've got to look at what your manning requirements are. And if I'm correct, it's, it's really based on staffing-specific firehouses. So it's not that that discussion may or may not occur. All I'm saying is before you can decide whether you believe that you have the ability in order to reduce staff, and I think you really want to evaluate that first.
Just to be clear, are you telling us we need all of them then, or you're not saying that? So do we need 14 or 15 additional firemen to meet our minimum staffing requirements? Because that answers the question quite simply if it's true. I mean, if it's accurate.
Well, I'd want to understand what, how that number fits in within the context of what we're required to staff.
But I think at some point, if we didn't have those.
Well, did we or didn't we? I mean, without, I'm not going to answer that unless I actually evaluate what those requirements are. Because it would be easy for me to give you a yes or no answer. And I'd rather really defer and want to take a look at what those numbers actually consist of and what those requirements are.
And that would be in the collective bargaining agreements?
It would be, yeah.
I know you have to go, but the, the one concern I have there is the other salary.
Over here.
The other salary.
Right.
So I know in this budget, you have, and in the narrative you're explaining, you're giving the next administration maybe a little, little to hire a chief of staff or in the DPW, there's a position in the DPW for a second mechanic. My concern there is either it's in the budget or it's not in the budget. And, you know, I, I just am afraid we're setting a precedent that in another salary of $35,000, well, you know, I'm not saying this mayor, but someone comes in and says, I, I want to make an assistant and just give them some kind of ridiculous job. And then the $35,000, it, to me, it eliminates the role of council.
And it goes back to my obsession with job descriptions to make sure there's accountability and everybody knows what the job functions are that are associated with the position.
Right. We, I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to a chief of staff position, but I don't know how we can vote on that without, number one, a description of what that person would do. Do you understand?
I do. And, you know, here I thought I was doing something good for the administration.
Well, no, and I'm not, but I would prefer either put it in or don't put it in. That's just my own personal take on it. Because I, I just don't agree with, I think it's circumventing council. It's giving too much leeway to the administration. Like it's taking our check and balance power away from us.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I either agree or disagree with that. I, I think we, there's certainly some recognition that in certain areas there would be value in the creation of those positions. The, the current mayor had informed me that I was chief of staff while I was sitting in front of him, which that, I've looked at the responsibilities of a business administrator. Nowhere did I see chief of staff. So I recognize that there's some value there. If it was a position that I didn't think had, added value, I wouldn't have even contemplated putting it on.
Oh, I agree with you.
And we may not even disagree. I just need to see it in writing.
Yeah, and this was one way to approach it. Is it the best way to approach it? I don't know. I don't disagree with you. I'm just looking at the rationale or the justification for those few positions. The same would be with public safety director, which the city did have at one time, slash emergency management coordinator. I mean, that's a position that I think adds a lot of value. So it, it wasn't used liberally. There were really only a couple of instances where it was used. And it was really just designed to offer the incoming mayor some flexibility. I, I don't disagree. It's a good point. I never even thought of that point, to tell you the truth.
And my one other fear too is when you walk around, and I hate to say this because I've seen no evidence of this, to be quite frank with you, people do complain about no work jobs. Jobs that people get paid for but don't come to. And I think having a job description that clearly sets forth, again, essential functions, who they, who they report to, what are their mandated responsibilities, just creates an excellent layer of accountability for all people involved.
I agree. And I, and I think we, we've tried to work to improve that deficiency. And I think that this is a historical issue.
It would be a function of HR really, not you, I don't think.
Well, it is, but it's also a historical issue. It wasn't as though all of a sudden through the current and prior administration, there was a neglect in creating job descriptions. I mean, what we found when we were looking at making some adjustments is there weren't job descriptions. So this goes back historically over a longer period of time. We've tried to work toward creating job descriptions with positions that we're actually creating. So the fleet coordinator or fleet manager, however you want to term it, there's an actual job description that I created that has been submitted for review and evaluation. So we're trying to do that. Are we where, are we at where we should be? No, we're not. I, I think it would require a complete evaluation of positions within the city, not only to see if there are job descriptions, but to see if they're current. I mean, you could have job descriptions that date back 20 years that have no value.
The other salary budget funded for the possibility that the single tax office is designated as a collector of payable prep tax. And it says the office would be required to add personnel to the collection of the tax. Is that the only option for the collection of the?
No, and, and there isn't anything in there that says you have to execute on it either.
Right.
That, again, that's the benefit.
But I mean, if that's in there, can the tax collector then say?
No.
I want to create a.
Because we remit, we're responsible for. They'd have to provide justification and say, here's what the responsibilities are going to be. Based on those additional responsibilities, this is what the staffing level would be. So if that's the case, you'll have dollars that are budgeted that can accommodate whatever that is. If there aren't going to be any staffing adjustments that are needed, then you're not going to allocate those dollars out.
And then there's salary increases for employees in the single tax office based on managing changes to the city's grant reference building and payment program. Can you just talk about that for a minute? Like what are the, what are the additional duties that are not given?
Well, so I am going to be here until seven o'clock. There would be additional responsibilities relative to the management of what's a very significant program. Am I going to sit here and delineate what those responsibilities are on the staffing level? No. I mean, we had a meeting for an hour with the tax collector going over logistics, you know, what would be required? How can your employees manage what is a pretty significant program? So there was some evaluation involved. Can I do like a one more question?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I dominated.
That's all. We'll pick out your question. I want to make sure we have time to get everything as much in.
My health insurance, I got it out. I'm good.
And Dave's been more than generous with your time. I do thank you. So whatever your most pressing issues that you have left though, and then we'll wrap it up. But anything else we can do via email?
I, I, you know, I didn't get a chance, and I do appreciate you being here. And I, just a comment for a minute. You know, as somebody who is not, does, is not coming from a financial, it's not, this is not my real house finances, obviously, but having a voter put my name on this budget, this is, I think, why we all really do take our time and, and ask questions that I think are relevant.
I've not complained about.
No, I know that, but I just do want to make that point because I think it is important. But I think my biggest concern about this whole, this whole budget is the conversion from the refuse fee into the, to the real estate tax bill. And the fact that we're, you know, maybe we're not considering, you know, raising taxes. So if council were to come to a decision to, you know, take Pell's, I think, I don't know if it's, if it's their advice or the documentation that they gave, would that be something that the administration would be comfortable with?
Well, what you want to keep in mind is I'm not the mayor, of course.
Right.
So I submit recommendations to the mayor and he'll review them and make a determination as to what he or she think would be most suitable. So again, there's value in what Pennsylvania Economy League had, had presented. And I think they showed you data that said, you know, you should really look at incremental adjustments because otherwise if you allow that process to lag, you're going to look at a significant increase. And I don't think anyone wants that. I, I think that the mayor's point and the point that I had made was would I have recommended an adjustment in real estate tax mileage? Sure, I did.
So you did recommend.
But is it a value that's sufficiently critical that can't be overcome within the existing budget? And I don't believe that that would be the case. So foregoing it this year, I think is manageable within the context of this budget. I certainly would think that that would not be the case in 2021.
So, okay, and this is my final question here. I apologize. I'm just trying to understand this. If you don't raise taxes this year, and let's say everything goes right, well, I mean, I don't know if you can project this, but then what does it look like next year, the tax increase?
Well, what did I say initially? Over five years, you're down $10 million in assessed valuation. You're starting out your budget process in a hole. Same mileage. The value is less. So you're trying to create a budget with one of your principal revenue drivers that's deficient. I think the data relative to earned income tax has been favorable. I think we have a very realistic number that should perform within the budget in 2020. I'm not quite so concerned about that. But if one of your principal revenue drivers is consistently deficient and your costs are increasing, how are you going to make up that balance?
That's my question.
Right. So, you know, we could do what we did this year. Let's just say that there was no sale of receivables. It's off the table. You're making up two and a half million. How are you going to make that up? You're not increasing earned income tax.
Right.
Your payroll preparation tax is based on a factor. That's a constant number. Your local services tax has incremental increases, so it's going to come out of your real estate. I, I think, and that's always going to be the discussion that's had at this table. Doesn't matter whether any of us are going to be sitting here within any specific period of time. I think it could be a more intelligent discussion if there's a reassessment because that may shore up some of those deficiencies. But at least for now, it's the process we have to deal with.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, thank you very much. Very appreciated.
It was very helpful.